Good afternoon, welcome to the Senate Committee on Education. Today is Monday, January 30th, 3 o'clock PM, and we are in hearing room 229. This meeting, including the audio and video of remote participants, is being streamed live on YouTube. You will find links to viewing options for all Senate meetings on the live and on-demand videos page of the Legislature's website. This Zoom meeting and YouTube livestream event will include the 3 o'clock PM agenda of this Committee on Education. In the unlikely event that we have to abruptly end this hearing due to major technical difficulties, the Committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on February 1st, Wednesday, 2023, at 3:00 PM, in this room 229, and a public notice will be posted on the Legislature's website. I'd like to take this time to remind our testifiers that due to time restrictions on our hearings, we will be limiting testimony to one minute per testifier per bill. For people participating remotely, please remain muted and video disabled until shortly before it is your turn to testify. When I call your name, unmute yourself and your time will begin. After your minute is completed, staff will mute you so that we can move this hearing along in an orderly and efficient manner. Thank you. Our first agenda item is Senate Bill 106 relating to education. Authorizes the Department of Health to require the Department of Education to report coronavirus disease 2019 case counts and other related information in a manner most appropriate to public health and safety as determined by the Department of Health. Testify. We have Superintendent Kifayashi.
Aloha Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Kim, members of the Committee, Kifayashi Superintendent, testifying on behalf of the Department of Education. The Department stands on its written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Superintendent Hayashi? Next to testify, Kenneth Fink, testifying for the Department of Health.
Good afternoon Chair and Vice Chair, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I'm Sarah Kemble, state epidemiologist, speaking on behalf of Dr. Fink and the Department of Health today. We stand on our written testimony as submitted in support of this measure and stand by for questions. Thank you.
Thank you Sarah, you look different behind your mask. It's been a long time since we've interacted with you. Thank you for being here. Members' questions? Thank you. Zuri Aki, testifying for Office of Hawaiian Affairs. His testimony is in support. Gerald Silva. Not here. Opposes. Susan Nicola Davis. Also opposes. Short recess. Thank you. Sorry, forgot the protocol. It's been a while. So anyway, this bill, Senate Bill 106, requires, no longer requires the Department of Education to report to the Department of Health weekly COVID counts. So it's by request from here on in. So there being no further testimony. Are there any questions from the members? Thank you.
Do we even need a measure like this? I mean, I know we want to get rid of the requirement, but do we have to?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Just given anyone requested?
Yeah, I mean, that's basically what it's moving, moving it out so that because it was required previously, we had to have a bill that changes the status. So it is by request.
So we could just, I mean, we could just repeal the whole thing?
Yes. Further questions, members? Thank you. Moving on to the next item, Senate Bill 4014 relating to education. Establishes the Hawaii Educational Expenditure Trust Fund as a separate fund of the Department of Education for improving the education and supporting the programs benefiting the students of the Hawaii Public School System. To testify, Superintendent Hayashi, please.
Aloha Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Kim, and members of the Committee, Kifayashi Superintendent, testifying on behalf of the Department of Education. The Department stands on its written testimony in support of this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Superintendent, could you just give a brief description of what this trust fund does?
Yes, the fund would go beyond the department's existing authority for trust funds by allowing for the deposit of state or county funds into the fund, the acceptance of non-monetary assets, and authorizing the hiring of an investment manager and a third party to receive the administration and expenditure of funds. Also, I have Deputy Superintendent Kurt Guro also here to answer any additional questions.
Thank you Superintendent. Members, are there any questions? Senator Kim?
Mr. Hayashi, Tax Foundation of Hawaii notes that this fund is entirely unnecessary and probably violates special fund and trust fund criteria in chapters HRS Chapter 37. What's your response to that?
Thank you very much for the question, Senator Kim.
Very basically, we disagree with that determination that it's inconsistent with state law. There is an incredible amount of transparency for non-general funds as required by Chapter 37. One of the concerns was a lack of transparency here, but clearly Chapter 37, 47, and the annual non-general fund reports that are posted on our site as well as on VNS website and submitted to the Legislature every year would detail out revenues, expenditures, all kinds of information about these funds.
Yeah, but who really, who always read it and see those?
Well, I think certainly the fiscal committees and their charge with reviewing our budget requests.
So why is this, why is this necessary?
For the reasons explained by Superintendent and going beyond an existing trust fund.
But for what purposes? I mean, what is it that you're not able to do now that this fund will allow you to do?
Inspiration for this fund included things like the Corvallis, Oregon Corvallis Public Schools that have foundations, the University of Hawaii's foundation where they have more externally operated fiscal support to support the governmental functions. So it's to house resources perhaps outside the state treasury managed by third-party administrators to then support. Where, as right now, we have schools that may be doing some of this work on their own or maybe doing it with the PTSA that may from year to year, you know, transition in capacity. So this is to try to create a separate entity that can house and manage that and provide continuity and manage risk as well as being transparent based on the requirements of state.
I know that Farrington has the Farrington Foundation, McKinley has one, I think. Maybe Lani, no, not Lani, Waheva, I mean, I think they have their own. So how would that relate to this fund?
I think they would provide an option for those that don't have that capacity of a large school, especially a large urban school, to provide that kind of continuity and support. I think it's a highly technical thing to manage resources. I would expect.
So you both have this fund and in the fund you would delineate any kind of donation or resources that might be given to a particular school and you're going to keep track of all of this?
That's in large part why we're looking at a third-party administrator as well as a fund manager.
What kind of costs is that going to be?
Essentially require multiple accounts within a larger fund that would roll up into a larger fund.
I mean, that's a nightmare. How many schools you have?
That's what we currently do within our state system with our trust funds when we have donations, gifts and donations for specific purposes. And you are correct, it is a very challenging activity.
And who manages it now?
A very small team of accountants as well as each of the school's administrators who come and go and with the support of their school staff.
And what kind of cost this is going to require?
That's not, that's not determined at this point. How much that third-party administrator may cost. It would depend on the scope and the use. So this is to start the conversation, to start the fund and to start the work. Something that like, again, we go back to modeling after UH Foundation and other entities that have created organizations like this.
Well, I'm concerned because, you know, we passed that assessment and we didn't know it was going to cost us a million dollars to go hire somebody else and get another entity. And so here we are embarking on a full new fund. We're not sure what the cost might be and then we may be looking at more than what, what, you know, resources you probably can even bring in. Who knows, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further questions?
Yeah, Chair. May I want to sit back now? Just so to follow up on this, trust is the intent to have a tax exempt, rephrase that, tax credit to the donation into the trust. Is that the idea? Because I've worked on universities that have these foundations and trusts where it's true. I know it's out of 513 necessarily, but so there's a tax benefit to the donor? Is that what the intent is?
No, that wouldn't be one of the intents, yes.
Okay, and then as far as, I hear what you're saying about the management to be determined a little bit later. But also the other side of that, this would be administered by the state on a per-school basis? Or is it managed by the state for the whole school system? The reason I ask that question is if you have someone in, you know, my district, District 4, someone in North Hawaii donates something with the expectation the funds are going to go into the schools in that district, but then it gets diverted to another side. So that's a concern.
Our expectations, it would be, it would be like the Lohe United Way where you have a generic general fund as well as specific funds that you could donate to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Chair.
So right now, when somebody makes a donation to the way it is, do they get a tax credit? Tax rate or whatever?
Donations to Hawaii Public School System are taxed.
Okay, so you don't need this fund to give them a tax credit. I don't know for that. Thank you.
Question, Brian. You keep trying to run away. The more you stand up, the more we'll ask you questions. So my question is if you're going to spread the money out to various schools, for those schools, as discussed, whether it's McKinley or Farrington, that already have something, you know, going, are they expected to put that money now into this trust fund?
That's, that's not part of the expectation at this point, no.
Okay, and so if they have those separate funds, will they be excluded from receiving any money that goes into this, this trust fund?
No, and I think we'd like it to be as an option to join the fund if they see fit to do so.
Okay, thank you. Further questions?
One last question, I promise. According to the Tax Foundation, it says the proposed fund does not appear to meet the criteria for a trust fund. No student, for example, can say he or she has invested beneficial interest or ownership in any of the monies in the fund. It probably is more accurate to classify the proposed fund as a special fund.
I think the beneficiary of this fund would be the public school system in those that it serves.
Yeah, but apparently what a trust fund is defined as one in which designated persons or classes of person have invested in beneficial interest and equitable ownership of which was created or established by a gift, grant, and contribution, et cetera.
No, I think it's the class, the class is what we're talking about, of individuals. Not an individual student necessarily.
And whereas special funds are, okay, we'll take that up in decision-making.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Yeah, I just prepared here. So you said it's not for an individual student, do you think?
Correct.
Well, the only reason why is because of here says support the programs and benefits of students of the Hawaii Public School System. That's.
I wouldn't expect a donor would say, I want to give money to Johnny and then we would manage that money on behalf of Johnny for his student's education. I think it would be for classes of students.
So also the premise, what I'm saying is that when we had went to the other schools around the state and some of the rural schools that's 100 years old and need a lot of help, but having this trust fund and then how you guys are going to allocate it and you guys, is that's going to be a fair way of distributing around across the board? You're saying, because you're saying it's going to be helping certain schools. On some of the schools, I'm going to show you as, like, spread the funds of the Department of Education to improve education, support programs, and benefit students of Hawaii Public Schools. So how you guys are going to, how you guys are know, you guys, how you guys are going to implement that?
I think it'd be very speculative at this point for us to say exactly how it would be done. It'll depend on the terms and conditions of the donors and for which they're giving the funds for. But I think we will try to create classes or general categories, the same way, similar to Lohe United Way and how they do it, as well as perhaps school by school, grade by grade, if absolutely necessary. But in general, I think our preference would be at the higher level in support of a school or group of schools. It would just make administration of funds simpler to have that kind of flexibility. But that'll have to be worked out as we get donors and start moving forward with this program.
The only reason why I say this is some donors is going to contribute more for some areas, some parts of the community. How you guys are going to allocate that knowing that the donor gave $100 million to Farrington High School? Something like that. I mean, how are you going to justify it and say, okay, we're not going to give $100 million to Farrington High School because most of the amenities are there? Not saying that they don't need it, but everybody needs it. But then how are you going to divert that money that this donor thinking that is going to be the person that taking care of Farrington High School?
I think the simple answer is accounting. And keeping track in accounting ledgers, rows and columns of information by organization, by school level, by purposes, by program.
You see the amount of stereotypes from like the rural schools that maybe not going to have big donors up in Kailua and Anna, those areas, how are they going to get anything if there's no donors that want to give to those schools? Then now we're in a same predicament that we kind of are now in the allocating of the money. So if you say that I will give you $100,000 and then you're going to let the donor know, we cannot specify all of it is going to go to Farrington High School. We might have to spread it around. We give them an option if they want to give that money. See, because if you take the money and you're thinking that you can have it for Farrington, find that you can use some of that money to Kailua with programs that have had some funding, then the person that gave them would be feeling like, hey, wow, you didn't have a say that in the print when I was donating my money. Thank you Chair.
Okay, I have a couple more, sorry. So who pays, who's going to pay the fees for this entity to manage this fund and do all of this detail work?
That's something we're going to have to work out the details on. How much it's going to be? Is it going to come from the interest earnings of the fund? Is what I would expect is what we'd be looking at.
Because I know the UH Foundation, they're asking for their ceiling to be increased and they get like 2 million. And so if it's only in kind and it's not cash, where is that cash going to come from? If people are only giving in kind and not giving cash?
These are, these are challenges that we'll have to work on as we.
And finally, it's solicit public and private monies for the trust fund. That I mean that now you guys can go out and solicit all this money and stuff? And who's going to be doing the soliciting?
Hopefully the third-party administrator with the support of the Superintendent. I believe that's what the bill includes.
And is that going to compete against schools that have their own foundations?
I'm not, I'm not sure of the nature of it.
I don't think this thing's baked yet. Okay, thank you.
Members, further questions? If not, thank you. Moving on. Senate Bill 481 relating to education requires Board of Education to develop a Hawaiian language medium education kindergarten entry assessment to be administered by the Department of Education beginning with the 2026-2027 school year. Requires the State Public Charter School Commission to adopt the assessment. Requires a kindergarten entry assessment be administered within 90 days of a child's admission to kindergarten, provided that the child has not received any other kindergarten assessment within the past 180 days. To testify, Superintendent, please.
Aloha Chair Kidani, Vice Chair Kim, members of the Committee, Kifayashi Superintendent, testifying on behalf of the Department of Education. While the Department stands on its written testimony in support, I did want to make some clarifying comments on this measure. This measure was introduced as a result of discussions held at the December 15th, 2022 Hawaii State Board of Education meeting. During that discussion, it was clear that the board direction aligned with the departments in deciding that a kindergarten entry assessment should be required of all students to ensure that we were tracking the progress of our students. However, an English kindergarten entry assessment would not be appropriate for a Kaipuni schools. And so the board approved the department's plan to move forward with developing a Hawaiian language kindergarten entry assessment. This piece of legislation is a result of that discussion. I'd like to be clear that a kindergarten entry assessment is not, is not going to deny any child the education that they want and deserve. No matter how a child on the kindergarten entry assessment does, they will be allowed to attend a Kaipuni school if they so choose. The kindergarten entry assessment is simply a tool to determine their level as they enter kindergarten. It's a measure to understand where the child's starting point is and how best to support them to becoming their best selves. It is not going to deny any student entry into a Kaipuni school or any school for that matter. The Department is in support of this bill, but it's asking for one amendment. The Department is asking that the kindergarten entry assessment not be required for a student who has already received 90 or more days of kindergarten instruction elsewhere. As I stated before, the kindergarten entry assessment is a tool to determine where a child is prior to any formalized kindergarten education. And so the tool will not be effective in assessing a student who has already had some kindergarten educational experiences. I stand ready to answer any questions you might have on this bill. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you Superintendent. Members' questions?
Maybe it's going to take everyone's testimony when I ask a question, but.
We can do that, yeah. We'll take everyone's testimony first. Yvonne Lau, interim executive director, Hawaii State Public Charter School Commission.
Good afternoon Chair Kidani, Vice Chair McConnell Kim, members of the Committee. Thank you for the opportunity, Yvonne Lau, interim executive director of the Charter School Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and I offer and stand on our written testimony in support with comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Canelo Kamahalo Hanu Eli. In opposition. Next, Kailani Laieha, Chief Executive Officer for Aha Punanaleo.
Aloha Mai Kako, au volku i Kailani Laieha. I am the Dunhuang Okelae of Aha Punanaleo and I stand on my written testimony. I'm also here to answer any questions that you folks might have. Mahalo.
Her testimony is in opposition?
Yes, in opposition. Mahalo.
Shannon Mattson? On Zoom also, Shannon Mattson? Shannon, are you there?
Apologies, yeah, apologies. I was trying to unmute. Aloha Chair Kidani and members of the Committee. I submitted testimony in opposition and I'm grateful to have been able to hear the statement from the Superintendent before replying a bit further. I hear his testimony that it's just another tool for support, but I am still opposed. As a parent of two Keiki, one in Punanaleo and one in Naukau. As a parent and as a taxpayer, I don't think that this additional assessment is necessary. I trust the kumus to determine what their level is and they have their own tests already designed in Hawaiian language that are not translated from English to Hawaiian. I think that those tests are already sufficient and valuable and that we don't need to spend any more money or time creating a standardization for this. So I'm still in opposition. Mahalo.
Thank you. Mitzi Higa, testifying for HSTA. I'm not sure, is she on Zoom? Doesn't say. Mitzi Higa, are you on Zoom? No. Megan Makua Aiona. Is anyone else here to testify on this measure? There's a list, but it doesn't say if they're going to be present or not. Please come forward.
Aloha Kayaka Chair, Vice Chair, and the Education Committee. My name is Tris Shion, or my American name is Ashla Melody Young. I'm an advocate and a founder of My Grassroots Cares and I'm a constituent of Kalihika Palama. Testifying in strong support of the measure. The purpose of this act is to require the Board of Education to develop an assessment for those who are entering kindergarten in O'welo Hawaii for Ka'papa Kaipuni. And the DOE shall administer the assessment. And I'm just going to give a brief background history about the Hawaiian language and why it's essential to our schools. The Hawaiian language is very essential, it's a very essential aspect of our culture. A Hawaiian language instructor at HCC said, "The Hawaiian language is linked to the care of our lands, waters, and cultural resources. It is vital to peace-building and the reconciliation process of the Hawaiian culture." Since the amendments to the state constitution, the DOE has included many aspects of the Hawaiian culture into the education system. It is vital to the preservation of our culture to support every aspect of the Hawaiian language at schools, especially for those who are entering kindergarten. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Kristi. Is there anyone else here who wishes to testify on this measure? If not, members' questions? Yeah, I guess Superintendent?
Well Superintendent, the concern I raised about these assessments seem to be echoing through some of the testimony that we're hearing about that the kindergarten teachers are more than equipped to be able to assess the students and that the money should be spent in other ways to benefit the student and that this test that comes from John Hopkins isn't necessarily. Uh, and that this test that comes from John Hopkins isn't necessarily going to be able to relate to what's happening with our students here. And I think we brought this up in the concerns and I don't know that you guys are continuing to proceed in this manner, but. Of course, if there's concerns about our Hawaiian children, it certainly is same thing for all the other children in the system. Um, so how are you folks dealing with this?
Thank you very much for the question, Senator Connaught Kim. Um, the, the, as, as, what I understand is that, um. As we move forward with the Kaila Puni assessment, uh, we will be engaging with Hawaiian Kaila Puni educators. As well as the Kaila Puni community in designing the assessment. Uh. I also have, uh, let's see, Deputy Armstrong, um, and, uh, Owee, Director, uh, Kawise here. Or also Terry Ishijima, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, good afternoon, Heidi Armstrong. And um, if I can just rephrase your question, you're asking, wh- why do we need th- this assessment?
The overall, I know we passed, we, the legislature passed the assessment. Um, and at the time when I supported it, oh, my understanding was, and I thought it was going to be developed within the school system and the teachers and the classrooms, the best one to give the assessment. And now we're looking at spending over a million dollars for a one-time assessment and, you know, um. Superintendent just said this is to track the progress. I'm not sure how you're even gonna track the progress. This is only gonna be good for this one period in time. By the time the child is through with that class, that year, that the growth is huge, usually in kindergarten to first grade. And that it's gonna be outdated. And so the kind of cost that we're spending could be better utilized. Within the classrooms and for the students directly. A teacher knows at this level, after about a week with each of the students. Of what their levels are. Now, look, it's even before they enter kindergarten. So I'm not sure how you're gonna assess them before they even enter kindergarten. How, how is that being done? They're interviewing every student before they enter?
And, and what, what this assessment will do will allow us to have a data, a, a source of data, letting us know. Um, the status and, and how our kids, what our kids know, what they're able to do, what are their strengths, what are their needs as they enter into kindergarten? And this is valuable in the entire early childhood continuum because we know, um, we have um birth to three programs, we have preschool programs. And this will allow us to have valid and reliable data. Um, that will point out, that will give us information on strengths, needs. Um, it will allow us to identify where resources may need to go. Um, it will allow us to determine if additional community supports may be necessary. In the years prior to the students coming into kindergarten, so that when they enter kindergarten, they will be um where they need to be. Um, to um address the appropriate kindergarten standards that they'll be facing.
So I'm not following. So my child is entering kindergarten and so he's given this assessment when?
Within the first ninety days.
Within the first ninety days of being in kindergarten.
Correct.
Okay, so within that first ninety days of being in kindergarten and then now you're gonna go get the resources after you, you, they determine it? They're already, he's already in that class. Now you're gonna go out and get resources and have the data that's going to?
No, the, 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 the advantage of having a standardized test is it will give us statewide data. To make broader decisions. What this information will give the individual teacher are the strength and need areas of the child. When he or she enters the classroom.
And why can't these teachers from Hawaii who knows our students create the standardized test for our state? Why do we have to go to John Hopkins? They're the best ones in the classrooms.
I'll, I'll, I'll let Lauren um take that question.
Aloha. My name is Lauren Podolski. I'm the Early Childhood Specialist at the Office of Curriculum and Instructional Design. Um, let me rephrase to make sure I understood your question. Why a standardized tool instead of creating one within the state, correct?
Yes, the teachers who are the ones that are working with these students and have many of them in testimony that I read, some of them worked for twenty years. At this level and they're the best ones to be able to assess the students.
The teachers certainly are experts in what they're teaching. Um, anecdotally, many of our teachers are assessing children on kindergarten level content that they're also going to teach. The advantage of the tool in our mind is that it's going to provide us with some information about prerequisite skills. That some children may not have yet mastered and are not being uniformly assessed in our school system yet. Consequently, we have children that are experiencing cycles of difficulties. That could potentially be identified very early in order to provide timely interventions and prevent difficulties later. Those prerequisite skills, particularly in literacy and language, are very critical. And if we can have a really strong identifier that's uniform across the state. It helps us to be able to potentially identify where we can strengthen our entire school force.
I s- I still see how, and I'm not gonna beat this too much longer, but. How you're gonna take this one assessment, ninety days when the kid is in kindergarten. And that's going to prevent all this stuff from happening because I know already these students aren't being assessed by the teachers. And they can tell what some of those problems are. Now, I don't know how that one-time assessment is going to help across the state. Um, and if they can come up with a standardized for across the state, they can utilize it. But then when they go to first grade, second grade, what happens then? Are you gonna keep assessing them?
They are assessed in their universal screeners, in their content areas, as well as their social emotional learning.
But they're not given a standardized test, right? When they get to first grade, second grade, third grade.
Do you mean like a first grade entry assessment?
No, I'm, I'm saying like this kindergarten assessment, are you assessing them every single year?
They continue to be assessed on their mathematics.
That's not the question. The question is, are they getting to receive that same kind of statewide? John Hopkins assessment, so you can track their progress, as you stated, every year.
I'm not sure I understand what the purpose that would be.
The purpose would be, how, why would we validate this one-time assessment when it's not gonna be consistent? Because the cost of a million dollars every year, how do you justify that? I mean, you know, we only have so much money in the school system and I would like to see that money actually go to help those students that really need the help. But we spend so much time getting data and then it sits there and we do nothing with it.
And I can, um, thank you, Senator, for the question. Um, I, I think too, if I can take a moment to expand on what Lauren had shared. Um, as, as we assess the students, say, in the first year of the assessment, we'll get some standardized um. Authentic data that we can use to, for that first year's cohort, right, to see where they're, as they come into kindergarten. Perhaps where some of the needs are as they, as they're coming in. Uh, subsequently in, um, subsequent years. We'll also be able to gather data on the students who are coming into kindergarten and, um, using that statewide, looking at the data. Um, and I, I totally understand what you're saying. We, we do need to take action on that data, not just collecting data for the sake of collecting data. Uh, but look, really analyzing what the data is telling us. And from there, um, make for trends, perhaps some, um, growth areas that we can share uh with our early learning partners. As well as, um, how we might take a look at that data moving forward to, uh, to provide perhaps professional development. Um, or other, uh, conversations with our kindergarten teachers, we'll build, um. An array of strategies that our, our teachers can help our students with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Favela?
The, the reason why, um. I have a hard time understanding is because, um. When I went to school and my daughter went to school, the people that did the assessment and observation was their teachers. Never changed when I was there at school, um, until now, even now. And then now we're getting this standardized testing. For, for kindergarten. And then, how, how I know this is because when my daughter went to kindergarten, they know who went to preschool or early education. It had all these data on, on the kids, on whatever, um, questionnaire that the parents submitted to the school, did your kid go to preschool? Early education or daycare or whatever, so they know how the kid, uh, interact with other kids. So I, I just get one hard time because, um, you know, our kids, our teachers are going to school for early education and. A lot of maybe the early education is to observe and monitor the kids on their, what their needs and what their, what their needs or not having needs. Um, going forward, but, um, I, I feel like what Senator Kim is saying is that. We must spend this one year, probably every year, and then we gotta monitor them or upkeep them. Um, or for the progress of, um, having these children, shouldn't we be investing in the teachers? Or the education of the teachers that is going to, uh, early education to have a little bit more, uh, maybe in their curriculum? You can tell the colleges to, to implement some of these things instead of having the benefit of using the teachers that. You know, nowadays, the teachers do teach what the subject that they're teaching and their, uh, um. Grave that they're teaching. I live when I was going to school, my P E teacher is teaching P E, but he's an English teacher. Those things, um, changed. So now we're specifying that the teachers are in their proper area of education and teaching. Whatever subjects they're teaching. But then now we're gonna say, okay, now we're gonna have another stuff them in the first ninety days. We're gonna have them assessed by this assessment. But I remember when my daughter went to, uh, second grade. Uh, within thirty days, um, the teacher already had assessed my daughter's needs, weaknesses and strengths. So when we had her parent teachers meeting, they would give us an assessment of my daughter's education, what is she's her weaknesses or. What is her strengths and what we can do to help her succeed in moving on. And that wasn't every grade. That wasn't just kindergarten. That was throughout her whole elementary, probably through high school. Um, because we tried to get her assessed when she was young, um, because we thought she had a, um, learning, uh, uh. Problem. But then the teacher realized that she, uh, she learns different. So it wasn't so much that she needed special education. In the early, um, elementary years, but they had said that she had enough that she has, she has learned, learned differently. Now, we never have none of this. We relied on the principals, relied on the teachers and we took investment of their time. Implement this with, with our children. So now, we're like getting a lot of, um, almost ninety something to a hundred, um, opposition. To this, um, to this bill because of the mixed feeling with the Hawaiian community. And, and people saying, okay, now we're gonna assess our kids at this one. So. It, it is, to me, um, having a standardized testing, um, for the, um, kindergarten kids and stuff like that. I think we should trust in our education system and the teachers and the people that's educating our kids there and not. Something that's gonna cost us a million dollars.
Thank you very much, Senator Favela, for the question. Um, the, so the, uh, the assessments that are done by teachers are to support students. As, as, um, teachers identify for individual students are what their needs are and what their strengths are and how to help support them. Um, are, are done teacher to teacher, right, you know, and, and, um. Each teacher uses their individual, uh, repertoire of strategies to help assess students and then help them move forth. Uh, what we're, uh, for this bill, what we're proposing is that, um, as students enter kindergarten. If we can have a uniform assessment of, um, both in English and one designed. Uh, for Kaila Puni students, uh, by Kaila Puni educators, um, and it, it, uh, Kaila Puni community members. Um, that will give us across the system. Uh, data and a look on where students are entering kindergarten, not only by individual classes, but statewide, uniform, yeah? So as they enter kindergarten, some of the struggles students may have, some of the common struggles a- across the system, um, as well as strengths. And it would then enable us in the department, um, to help support them, to identify, uh, areas of need. And provide, uh, the necessary supports and articulation and have teachers talk and collaborate. Uh, to help identify strategies to help support the students. So across the system, it'll help us, I think, um, get better as well as individually, as you shared, with individual teachers. Um, helping students within their respective classrooms.
This is the problem that right now the Hawaiians, the charter schools are having. Because they put in a lot of effort in their abilities to assess and work with individual kids, you know, in their way. And then we're gonna have a standardized test. Same thing with, with Senator Kim. Don't get me wrong, I would wish that we teach Hawaiian in all the schools. From kindergarten to high, to, to, to college, whatever. But again, then now, what about the kids that speak Filipino? Or they have, uh, um, problems in, in speaking English. Um, you know what I mean? So you guys gonna do a standardized? Reason why I say this is because even when I was going to school, we had the kids in my class, uh, trouble speaking. We're going to a separate class, doing so much part of the day to work on their curriculum. So the schools have the ability, the principals, the teachers and people within the school system, the system. Had the ability to do this, um, assessments, um, with, with the kids. Um, I, I just think it to myself, we're taking it to a level that. How we gonna standardize everything, which sometimes is good, but sometimes I think, um, is not good. That's all. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Senator Canoah?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just kind of questioned this one. Um, especially since you said, you know, you're gonna gather data, you know, and how best to support the students. Do you need a bill to gather that data on how best to support the students in the Kaila Puni, um, schools? You can't, couldn't you do that already? Um, I know the standard, I get the standardized part of that. And I don't know if I completely agree with that specific thing, but, you know, like for myself, like I'm, I'm. I'm trying to look at where, why we need to, you know, move this forward when you could already do a lot of this stuff already, correct?
Uh, we, we can individually, Senator, yes.
And then gather the data from the individual teachers and the different schools and?
But the, um, the type of, thank you for the question, Senator Canoah. The, uh, the. We can gather individual assessments from individual schools. Um, however. Those assessments that are designed by teachers in- individually, uh, would be difficult to aggregate. Because they're not the same assessment system like, yeah.
No, I get it because, I mean, even the kids starting off in kindergarten too, right? You know, ninety days for them to learn. Um, a lot of them come into the schools not knowing the Hawaiian language and learn, uh, come, you know. Completely learning. A lot of them don't go to like, uh, pre-immersion, uh, preschools. So everybody's gonna be completely different, you know, on that ninety days of still continuing to learn and figure a whole bunch of things out. I don't know, it just seems like by that standardized ninety days, you know, the, the data might be a little skewed. Um, because everybody, you know, there's so many kids that are coming to kindergarten not knowing anything, right, of Hawaiian language. I'm just wondering if that's the right, I mean, to completely standardize it, it, if you're gonna get the right, correct data that you need. That's my question.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, yeah, anything you wanna add, uh, for the Senator's question?
I would say that we are definitely confident that if we undertook a rigorous process with the Kaila Puni community, that we would get the data that we need. And that they need in a way that is very sensitive to the uniqueness of the community. And that is important because common goalposts, like we've talked about, I think throughout our conversations today. Are critical and being able to have a common understanding from school site to school site. Um, what constitutes that entry expectation is very important and can be. And leveling the flame field for students by ensuring that we define what we expect in a common way. So that all children can be successful from the start and aren't potentially negatively positioned by differing expectations from site to site.
No, I, I definitely get where you're gonna be going with this. I just, it just seems like there's some kind of disconnect between what you actually wanna do and like what all the testimony that we've been getting. You know, the, the hundreds of testimony that, um, Senator Favela spoke about earlier. I don't know if there's really that collaboration going on in that understanding, but there might be. I mean, I'm just, I don't know. I haven't reached out to them, uh, all the, those that did testify in opposition and I definitely will. I think one of the testifiers was Kailua Himura and somebody that I wanna talk to her to see, um, why she opposed it. Even though it's kind of laid out a. um why she opposed it, even though it's kind of laid out a little bit in the testimony.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Chair.
Go ahead.
Uh thank you. So I, I think I'm struggling like Senator Kanuha is. Um and also stated by Senator Ca- uh Pabella. Okay, we gather data, we gather ga- data, it sits on the shelf, but okay, then what? So what's the follow-up? We have data, but then what? And so that's why I'm struggling with this and I I'm, you know, like Senator Kanuha was talking about. This data can be gathered, at least started, to show what it's gonna be bringing to us. And so I'm I'm a little puzzled why it's here. I'm listening. And I think I understand what your intent is, but I don't see the the follow-up and then what we're gonna do with this data. So that's why I'm trying to get my arms around that.
Oh, thank you, Senator, for the question. Um the the data that we'll be gathering um will be used to, definitely will be analyzing and and action-oriented, so definitely will be one area. Um and also to use that data to inform and to share with our uh early education partners. Um perhaps uh where some of the need is. The the ability for us to look across our system and to identify need for our students, I think, is one of the the uh one of the strengths that will allow us to support our students in moving forward, once they enter kindergarten.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Superintendent, the Board of Education, uh I guess it's December meeting or something, required that required this. Is this their mandate?
Um the the board, yes, Senator, the uh
Okay, so are they already, are
Wha- what's it? Yeah, you're tr- I
Hello, Senator, my name is Kali Seh, I'm the director of the Office of Hawaiian Education, um reporting directly to the Superintendent. Um in the December fifteenth meeting, the Department of Education made a recommendation to the board based on um the ask out of Act Ten to develop um and administer a uniform assessment for kindergarten ready- kindergarten readiness for all students in the Department of Education. In its October meeting, it's October or November meeting, they approved the use of the Johns Hopkins University Assessment for our English language students. Um and in its December fifteenth meeting, they approved the recommendation for the development, the identification of um standards for our Hawaiian language immersion students and the development of an assessment tool that would be used for a kindergarten ready assessment, readiness assessment for those Kiki coming into Kaupuni schools. And so sort of two different strokes um happening here. One, um sort of this aside, the Johns Hopkins tool uh to be used for all of our English students um coming into kindergarten and then uh tool that would be developed and designed by the community, um including our teachers um and our stakeholders in the community uh for our Hawaiian language immersion program students. All of these, these two assessments are gonna be tools that would be used to um address the ask out of Act Two Ten um relative to uh administering a uniform kindergarten readiness assessment.
So the um assessment for kindergarteners, other than the Hawaiian Hawaiian immersion are already happening? Or that has not been done yet? Is this going to be done all at the same time?
No, the um so the English ass- well, Act Two Ten asks the department to administer, to start the administration of a kindergarten readiness assessment in the fall of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so it's not prepared yet?
No, we're in the current, we're in the process of procuring uh for the English assessment, the Johns Hopkins tool.
So this bill is to include a Hawaiian immersion version, and I I think
Correct.
Is that correct? So I think a lot of the complaints that were, you know, emails we're getting is maybe the uh the audience does not understand that there is there was already a requirement to do the kindergarten entry assessment. Correct. Okay, so I guess as to Senator Kim's question, why Johns Hopkins? And are you using Johns Hopkins for the Hawaiian immersion version also?
Um I am, my understanding is that the Johns Hopkins tool um for the English program was selected after a review of tools that met um the requirements of Act Two Ten to be able to address the five domains that are listed in in the law um for the Hawaiian language um assessment tool, because there isn't something that is available to the department to be able to administer readily in fall of twenty twenty-three. We are asking for an amendment to the law to make time uh to be able to convene community in a process, in a rigorous process, to then develop a tool by the community for the community that can be used um uh be uh beyond its final phase of preparation.
Okay, so what if the student or parent refuses to do the assessment?
I'm gonna defer to Deputy Deputy I'm sure for that.
Yeah, I know it is, but I can just sit there and not say anything if they, you know, I'm just saying. How how do you do, especially a kindergartner, if they decide you're asking them too many questions, they're not gonna talk.
Um currently, Senator, I don't believe we we have an opt-out process, but definitely that um can be considered. Yeah, we we could offer an opt-out process for the for the parent.
Okay, and I think the department should make it clear that this is not just a Hawaiian immersion assessment, that it's going to be done by all uh kindergartners, all those entering into kindergarten. Um so is this kindergarten assessment a national trend? Is this being required of many schools on the
Thank you. Um it is definitely a national trend, um and mixed in terms of whether states develop internally or whether they use um an externally creative tool. So um the Johns Hopkins tool is used by multiple states, including Ohio and Indiana and South Carolina and Maryland. Um several other states have created their own assessments on often a smaller scale is what we've noticed. Um something that stood out to us for the J H U tool in particular is that it is fifty percent observational items. So it's purely observing the children as they are. And you mentioned earlier, you alluded to the fact that children are who they are, particularly in kindergarten. So as a former kindergarten teacher, thinking about assessments that are actually developmentally appropriate, we look for flexibility while still remaining faithful to the content itself and ensuring that it's not one setting in order to do that assessment. So that was actually something that we saw as a limitation in many of the tools that were created and in use on the continent, as they were often assumed to be in one sitting and didn't rely on observation as a um as an as an assessment tool. So that's what drove our decision towards that Johns Hopkins University tool in particular. But we did have a national scan conducted um by Dr. Gigi Weisenfeld in order to make that determination and identify what other states were using. The large majority do have a K E I.
Thank you. So um being in Hawaii and all the different uh nationalities that we have, and there are um other children in school besides Hawaiian children who may not um have English as their first language. Um does that, I guess what I'm asking is the Johns Johns Hopkins um assessment, is it something you guys do verbatim? Or it's just telling you how to do it and the teacher does it depending on who the student is?
Right.
I mean, using pidgin or whatever it is, you'd need to
Right, 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 right. So we certainly would not be looking for uniformity in language responses. Um in the performance items, there are somewhere a child might not speak at all and would just indicate a response, and that would be a valid response. Um the J H U also provides us with professional development supports for the teachers to actually administer. And that includes allowable supports for students whose first language is not English so that teachers can be less biased in their assessment of children and be able to understand areas where they might need to provide an additional support or may actually need to not score that item because it's not yet accessible for the child.
Thank you. And then going back to one of Senator Kim's questions is um so you do this in kindergarten, when do you do it again to see how uh well or not so well the child has advanced?
When I talk about that, I describe it in terms of taking your child to the pediatrician. Um so it's a developmental screener. Uh when we take our kids to the pediatrician, they don't get the age four screener again when they turn five, even if they weren't able to hop on one foot yet. We do the age five. So it's normed against developmental and age-based norms, as well as the content items for the math and literacy, which makes the scores complex. That's why there's multiple domain scores. So if we were to give the exact same items again at the end of the school year, they wouldn't be developmental expectations for that child anymore. So what we're trying to do internally is develop a system for understanding, particularly relative to the content items for literacy and math, what other kindergarten level assessments we already have in place that we can then start to compare. It wouldn't be an item-for-item match, but there um the assessment itself has been shown in previous states to be a valid and reliable predictor of students' third-grade literacy and math outcomes. So we are pretty confident that we would be able to develop internally a way for measuring those academic outcomes across time with this as a starting point.
Okay, uh thank you for the answered my question. Um I'm trying to think what how does this assessment help the child, the parent, the school? Um in the future years to to look at, to look back at what they did and what you thought that they needed help with, and did they get that help? Is this done again in the third grade to review that? That's what I'm asking.
Right. So that would not be a valid use of a developmental screener um because the children have aged three years. It would have to be another developmental screener normed to third-grade ages and stages to do a direct analysis.
Yeah, I get that. I get that, but again.
So so
What are you, what are you measuring it against? I mean, why are you measuring it if you're not gonna see how they're doing in two or three years? I don't know if you understand
Senator, yeah, currently, the um once the we administer the kindergarten entry assessment, um we we don't have, I don't I don't believe that we have a a other than the current screeners that we have, a- another developmental screener. Anywhere else that
And that's, and that's
I think that's your question.
And that's the trend. I mean, you don't need to do one. Is that what you're saying? Is that what Johns Hopkins say? Is that what? I don't know. Just asking. The parents are probably gonna wonder the same thing, that's why.
So I think I'm misunderstanding your question. Do you do you mind restating it for me?
I want you to know, if you're doing this test, what's the purpose? Are you gonna measure them against something else later on? That they should be at or after kindergarten, you know, before the year ends? Have they developed to where they should be if they didn't have normal development, normals for speed? That's what I'm asking.
So, et cetera, asking what what the gains are, right? How will we know whether students have made gains or not? Uh I I don't believe at this point, Senator, that we do, we have it in another developmental screener uh that that would measure. Uh we do have other screeners, um a- academic as well as social emotional screeners. But I think what we need to do is to see if um how we correlate, how we can correlate those those two screeners. So that's, that's a very good question that you asked.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm just wondering nationally, is there something else that is done? So are we doing it and then in a couple of years, you guys are gonna ask us to do something else with these kindergarten
Oh.
Assessments?
No, typically nationally, the purpose is to identify um where children start. And then growth is documented in a variety of ways, both formal and informal. Um many states use it as a predictor of later literacy and math outcomes on other standardized assessments. Um here, we are being asked to also provide that data back to our early childhood partners so that they have a sense um of where our students entered, so that we can collaborate around what needs to be done to support.
Right, Congress. So it it seems this assessment is more geared for the broader um health of students versus the individual students. Because you're saying you're gonna grab this data and that data can be shared with the pre-kindergartens and the early education to look at what can be done. And Superintendent, you said that this doesn't be allowed to create programs and and whatever statewide, right? It seems like all this broad kind of thing that you're gonna do the data?
Uh yes, Senator, uh thank you, um for that, uh for giving the opportunity to clarify. Yes, it is broad. I believe also though that uh the the more specific maybe where in in say in a school that has kindergarten teachers, um being that the assessment is a common assessment uh schools can then, schools and complexes can take a look at their respective data of the of their classroom uh and have, based on what they're seeing, uh teachers within a school, for example, can collaborate on what might be some of the effective strategies that they can um
Yeah, but you can do that now within your schools. You can have it uniform now and you can gather data now. And again, the thing is, if we have all the money in the world, what would we want? Right? I mean, and you don't have all the money in the world. And and you're not required at this point to um give us a uh priorities, like, okay, what's the most important on the list? And where would this land? Because you come to the legislature and you guys ask for everything, you know, and hope that you guys get something. But my thing is, when you work on that big broad picture, how long is it gonna take you to then take this data? And then create a program statewide and get the resource and everything? Take three, four years sometimes for you guys to do something like that, or if it even happens. And then you come in for money, you come in for legislation, there's other priorities. And so I'm just saying that you know, you're making good arguments why you want this or why it's needed, but the practicality of it. And having been around as I have, as long as I have, I see the practicality that is not necessarily there. You know, everybody wants data. I mean, we got H T A spending millions of dollars on data, data. They take the data before the visitor even gets here. I mean, and we've been doing that for seventy years. But nobody really assess, you know, what are the consequences and what are the intended results? What do we actually get? And how is it utilized? By the time you guys institute some of these programs, like the prisons have determined that we needed like an O triple C, now they're saying, oh, that's not the right model. You know, years later, after that, whatever data they got then is no longer current. Because the whole sentiment of the country has changed. And similarly, these kinds of assessments, the students change so quickly. Now with the entrance of pre-kindergarten, I'm sure it's gonna change because pre-kindergarten is going to certainly change some of these students entering into kindergarten. So your your assessments is not even gonna be current after the twenty twenty-three, once pre-kindergarten starts. That whole, those, all the students in there is gonna change the whole assessment of you know, so you're not gonna be able to do something standardized across the state. It's gonna be outdated, the twenty twenty-two assessment. Anyway, that's my consent.
Thank you.
Members, further questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Recede. Resuming the Committee on Education meeting. The uh committee has deliberated and the recommendation is for Senate Bill One O Six to pass with amendments The uh committee has deliberated and the recommendation is for Senate Bill one oh six to pass with amendments. The amendments are technical and non-substantive. For Senate Bill four one four, recommendation of the committee is, oh, I'm sorry. It's in order. If we have to vote, I guess we will. So Senate Bill one oh six passed with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Chair votes aye. A passage of Senate Bill one oh six with amendments. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Kanuha.
Aye.
Senator Richards.
Aye.
Senator Pabella.
Aye.
Four, five ayes. The recommendations are.
Thank you, members. And for Senate Bill four one four and Senate Bill four eight one, recommendation of the committee is to defer. Meeting adjourned.